I don't have any offense to sitting next to you.
No, no, you got your own table. I'd take it. All your books.
Look at you, Lily. You can spread out and set up your little office there.
Yeah.
Look at that.
He often asked for space. There's no one in his face.
I guess she did. Oh, he's mad.
Oops, I'll fall off. There you go. Okay. It's cold in here. It is wet. Why I came from outside so as long as this.
Okay, now we can go right on my statement.
Uh, just, yeah. Okay. I make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
No, second.
Go ahead, please.
Trustee Lichen?
Aye.
Trustee Mager?
Aye.
Trustee Sutter?
Aye.
Your comment?
Oh.
Motion passes.
Okay. Is there anybody who has any conflict of interest or need to disclose regarding our workshop agenda?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
And I do not. Well, with that being said, can we get the Cliff's Notes of our meeting?
Sure. How it is if you have any questions for the board, you would like to comment in each section period, please raise your hand or put your comments in Q and A. I'm speaking to no one. We have no one that is present right now.
Okay, going on record.
Anything put in chat will not be recorded, reviewed. I expect we just be nice to each other and go on.
Okay. So what we have, this meeting, this meeting is actually a workshop. It is about updating parts of our code. It is not a code rewrite. That was done actually extensively seven years ago.
Two and a half years.
Yep, thank you. Two and a half years ago. But as we move forward, were there anything like a rewrite?
2018. Did we do it in 18?
2018?
We adopted it.
19.
Adopted in November 2019.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, you know, we do see maybe there's some tweaks that need to be put forth with this and maybe a couple, you know, typos and errata. And so I want to thank Steve Loth for really kind of honing the list and kind of keeping track of things. And also members of the PZBA. I know Justin Glisstra deserves a shout out. He's been kind of working with you on this as well. And also members of our board too. So, you know, with that in mind, again, it's a workshop. I really want a hard stop, hopefully before 7 o'clock, at least, you know, let's just try to get a jump on some things and move things forward. Jeff, I know you had mentioned something to me that you...
Yeah, I need some guidance for the board that probably should have happened in the attorney conference session, but if the board is willing to entertain that tonight, 10 minutes after the meeting or...
Then why, okay, why don't we, let's shoot for a hard stop then in about an hour so we can switch over and, you know, have a session with our attorney.
It shouldn't be long.
Okay, okay. But, you know, that way we'll sort of factor it in for this evening. Okay. So with that being said, we do have just a list of the code updates, the references. I believe all of you did receive additional comments from, I believe Justin Glisstra put in some comments as well. All good work from everybody. And why don't we just kind of, just jump in, okay? And Steve, you know, do you want to just kind of set a few things up and just maybe work through the list with us?
Yeah, I mean, the basic list, as you start going through, there are a lot of like typos. There are a lot of references that there were two things that don't exist anymore. You know, like the first one, 168-6B2 district reference doesn't exist anymore. That isn't even a district. So, you know, signs permitted without a permit in the B2 district. So I don't know what we want to, you know, what do you want to change that to? Or should it just be removed?
Yeah, well, that's a question. And maybe that's something our attorney could speak to. Because if it doesn't exist in the same way, do we change that reference?
Right. Yeah, we might as well. There's two changes. There's two things going on with 186B. That's the first one. The second one is, yeah, I think it should be changed to VGB because that's literally the district that took over the B2 district.
So, Jeff, did you say 186 or is it 168?
168, yeah.
Yeah, 168-6. Yeah, the 6B has a B2 reference and B2 became, technically became VGB. So if you look at my list, 1 and 123 or 6 are actually the same thing.
You see where we are?
I see where we are. With regard to this issue, there are no gasoline service stations permitted in the village at all. So the two that we have, am I right? Just two?
I think, yeah.
Are pre-existing non-conforming uses. So I would, the solution, I think, is just to eliminate the first sentence of B. So then it just says in gasoline service stations or public garages. I mean, the board could go further and really decide, do they want to permit gasoline service stations in whatever the two zones are that they're currently in? Or do you just want to leave them pre-existing non-conforming? I mean, I think when the board adopted in 2019, excuse me, the thought was to make them pre-existing non-conforming.
Right. We didn't want any new ones coming in.
Right.
So, okay.
Can I just, so let's clarify on 168-6B. Right. So signs permitted without a permit in the B2 district, gas or service stations. Okay.
Right. If you simply remove that sentence, that would serve the purpose.
The first sentence?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm just reading the word that's up. Yeah, Lily, yeah. I find I'm needing a procedural certification. As we're working through this list and given this list, I am, I am wondering if the way to approach this, and if this is our plan, is one by one or, and then to take it to public hearing? This is not all administrative that I have sent.
Okay. So my thought, sort of dovetailing on your thought, would be that this is a meeting where you tell me, after discussing with each other, what changes you want made.
We direct.
And then, and then, when we are to the point where we're done, you will say, draft a local law with these changes. That will then go to all of you to consider, to shoot at, do whatever else you want with it. And once you're happy with the form, then we would send it to public. So this is to figure out, what do we want to do with these issues? I'm going to make notes of it. Dorothy is going to make notes of it. And when this board is ready, turn it into a local law making the changes in the code that this board has to sign.
Okay.
Does that help?
That helps. So I guess the next step is, I would have hoped that if we were breaking this down, and maybe when we get past the typo part, that it isn't all typos that I've seen, that we would have had copies of the local laws. I'm taking it from the perspective of people who have asked me questions. They're saying, these nights would be had in the packet of this list, but now we've got to go through and we've got to look up each thing. We've got to find it. I'm wondering if, how we might...
There's no good, there's no easy way.
There's no good way to do that?
There's no good way to do it, except precisely that. I mean, we can make copies of all of the code sections that we're going to discuss. And they, a lot of them cross-reference back and forth with each other. So you'd be looking at, for instance, you'd be looking at this change we're talking about. In order to analyze the change we're talking about, you would then go to the use tables in all, in all of the use tables to analyze what the permitted uses are. Are they a permitted use? And then what to do about that.
Right, okay.
So it's essentially, I, when I went through this list, I was back and forth through the zoning code, many parts of the zoning code, and many parts of this code. It's possible that the document will be, that's it.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I don't, is there any easier way to do it?
Maybe the easy ones, maybe we just provide an explanation. And then the ones that Lily was talking about, that may be a little more involved. We could somehow write some notes or something, I don't know, for the packet. But at this point, we don't need to do that. We're in a workshop. So maybe one that goes when we decide everything and then it goes to public hearing and we're going to ask the public for input, maybe.
Well, the documents are always made public and...
No, I meant maybe some notes. Because like when we did the zoning code update, we would put a little note, and we were pretty meticulous about that, to explain it without someone having to, you know, because like the average citizen may not want to dive back just to even understand. It's almost transparent if possible.
100%, exactly. And so I think, so when you guys did the huge code rewrite, so you provided all the notes for every single thing. Okay, so this is our just initial workshop. And out of that, we can put those, put it out there. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we all know the same thing. Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted clarification for how procedurally we were going to handle this. So I think, you know, some of this, as Steve mentioned, is just, yeah, it's pretty straightforward. You know, like there's an incorrect reference to something.
Yeah, there's only one change and a different part in the code points to a nonexistent zoning reference. You know, that's what a lot of these are. They're just, you know, like the B2 doesn't exist anymore. So the reference pointing into it.
And so in fact, it's more transparent then for us to be doing what we're doing to correct that. So people will be able to go through the code and find the most recent.
Yeah. There's really only two or three occasions where it's easy to say, fine. Many cases, you really have to look at the code and analyze what it is you're doing in order to say, yeah, no problem. Or to say, the problem is slightly deeper. Or maybe it's just because I'm a lawyer that things are getting complicated.
Okay. But I mean, you were starting out really with just those types of...
Yeah, they're simply, even the next one, the second one of this is just a typo.
Okay.
That's just a typo. That should be a normal range. It's an easy one.
For people following along, it's item number one and item number two. Do we all agree that in fact there was an incorrect referral for item number one?
Yeah.
You know?
Item number one clearly, because that could be just clearly to remove the...
The first sentence.
Right. And it clears it up.
Jeff, can I just, on the first one, you said the gas stations are existing non-conforming, right? But, so, pre-existing. So the, my question here is, so we can change the B2 to VGB, which is the corresponding district in terms of shape, but are we allowed to regulate something that is pre-existing non-conforming? Or is it senseless to really have that there since...
First of all, it would be inappropriate to put VGB because there's no district in which they're permitted. But you do have gas stations with pre-existing signage. So like, you know, whether, whether you want to just eliminate, I mean, this is the issue. Whether you want to eliminate the whole section because it's pre-existing or whether you want to leave it in there for a code reference so everybody knows what the signage should be. So it's a, it's a marker. I think that would be the better course. So you know what was permitted, when they were permitted.
Okay. Yeah, I see where you're going with that.
So just taking that first.
Because this section came up last year. Yeah, just say, no, we want to change it and do the lettering on Newcombs.
Okay.
So this section, the reference, in order to allow them to put the lettering on the comps.
So...
Wasn't there a lettering on the comps already? But if they're going to change it, you know, then if it wasn't in your law rule, it would have been something where they had to come and get every answer approval. So if this was utilized to allow them to put new lettering on the comps. Yeah, well, that's not probably not the right way to do it. But anyway, we're not going to revisit that.
Well, let's go back, I think, you know, because you raised a point that this at least is like the placeholder. I don't know if that's the right word.
Sounds like a good word to me.
Okay.
I think just, for me, I think just updating the zone name to reflect the new zone and when we come back to it later, it sounds like it's just fine.
Except there's no new zone.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no, I mean, you can't, you can't update it to add the zoning because there's no place where they're permitted.
It's pre-existing non-conforming. So this...
So you know, if you say, signs permitted without a permit in the, whatever it was.
VGB.
VGB. And there is another one. There's another district, NUC, or the one on the road is on VGB.
Well, that's...
Right. Sorry to say that first line. Just take the first line out and you don't have to worry about designating a district. That would solve that whole, actually simplest thing and just remove the first line without having to go too crazy.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, and the other gas station's in MUEC.
Pardon?
MUEC is the other gas station.
Yes.
Yeah, next to us here, you can tell.
All right, yeah. So just take out number six on the list. You can wipe that one out.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Is that something I got to talk about?
Yeah, I guess we saw, you're right.
So my note right now is in 168-6B, remove first sentence.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
210, second one is purely a typo.
Yes.
Okay.
Is the board cool with that?
I agree with Doris.
Yep.
All right. Third one is, that's up for a little bit of discussion. Because basically that you have no differences for the Cameron-Holy district versus the open space. That's a drafting or a compilation problem.
So...
That just should come out.
Well, yeah, in fact, I researched this one too. And the adopted code PDF that was the last distribution from our consultants, that chart is not there.
Right.
So I don't actually, I think that's actually not law. We suspect that we sent the department.
Oh, it's not law, but it's misleading, isn't it?
It's just on general code.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we don't have to do anything with that?
Well, I think perhaps our clerk could follow up with general code and compare the code, the PDF that was submitted to general code for codification on our system with what they actually present. I think they made a typo basically and they put in a chart that can be...
Okay. I will review.
Dorothy, do you understand the problem?
Yeah.
So that's the one in 210-23.6. There's a chart, this open space chart. If you look at...
The charts, sorry, sorry. It's the charts that follow 210 hyphen 23.6, period, F2.
Oh, whatever, 210.
Everything after F2 that's a chart was not, according to Justin, was not in what we passed.
It's on the, oh, but it's...
So it's in the, is it in the one online?
Yeah, it's in the one online too. It's right here.
Yeah, great. That's the problem. But it's not in, and so they give us the printout too. But basically when they entered it from the PDF, they pasted it incorrectly. It's a duplicate from somewhere else. So it was...
It's an entry error.
It's from the printout.
Yeah.
Yeah, the laws, in fact, are the ones that were submitted to the Department of State. So I think that's actually not part of our laws. It's just not displayed for them. It's in general code because of their error.
So it was an entry error.
It's an entry error in general code.
Right, right.
So it would be great to fix it without trying.
Yep, so far. Good one.
No, I'll look. Because whatever I submitted to them would have been what was adopted, which was taken to the Department of State. And they should have went back to the Department of State. They're supposed to...
Okay, so that's an action item coming out of this. It's not resolved yet. It's an action item. Okay, so...
All right. The next one on there, if you read the code in there, it states, "Operate for restrictions. No camera group problems shall be permitted in term of review on board two includes fast food service, drive-through facilities, or operating in any manner as a nightclub. A use of business includes providing entertainment with a live record, otherwise, patrons who may be seated are standing or may or not be engaged in consumption of food or beverage." Basically, what you're saying in that is nobody can play a radio or jukebox inside a restaurant in the village.
Can we just clarify a section? So around...
It is 210...
210-23. Yep.
Yep.
It's basically, like I said, it's saying you can't play like a jukebox inside any establishment to serve food.
So one way to address it might be to add the language, something to that, recorded music or something. That it includes CDs.
Yeah.
And just, would that be, or something the board might want to consider as addition of that sentence? Let's make sure we are interpreting it. Okay. Same way. Okay. I understand the intent. I remember now the intent. And it was like a disco, you know, that sort of, a DJ. I think it was an atmosphere, more of an issue than anything.
So are you, are we ready to roll on? You want to talk about this?
Yeah.
Okay. Lily, you're absolutely right. This was, this is from the old code. It was intended to control just that kind of situation. And if you look at Justin's notes, he, Justin V., his point is he thinks it's noise control as well. My thought is if you look at sub-paragraph two, just before sub-paragraph three, you've got character of the neighborhood such as causing noise in a location where it can be heard, neighboring blah blah blah. So you've got noise control there.
It's addressed.
So my, I mean, my thought would be, you've got two parts to three, which starts with include fast food service, drive-through facilities, which is different than the issue we're talking about. So I would suggest that a solution would be to just, if this is the board's, still the board's intent, to cut it off after drive-through facilities. So that you've got, that prohibition is remaining in there. And then you're taking up, following four lines dealing with the noise issue.
Because it's already addressed in two?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually.
It seems a little less... Yeah, like I said, it makes a restrictive. So any eating establishment can't play music while people are sitting. And many times we've approved acoustic music inside and that kind of stuff.
So we're combining part of three with two?
No, I would just take up...
We're just taking out three?
I would just take up the last part of three or most of three. So that it just reads include fast food service or drive-through facilities.
Period.
Period.
Okay, that's what I want to understand. Okay. I'm definitely interested since I'd like a little time with that. I want to read through it and try to remember what the original intent was.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, this is the, this is the board's deal. Are you on it? Deal with this.
Okay, so then the action is, a little more time. So you...
Yeah, okay.
I just want to, either we're chucking it off the list or there's an action to be taken. Okay.
I'm going to put a question on.
Do you feel that way?
It seems like the, I agree that under three, you're doing two very distinct things. Regulating fast food and regulating these things considered to be nightclubs. And I don't think that all that nightclub part is really contained under two. At least the way the code is written now. So I would like to have a little more time to digest it.
Okay, so what would you and the action item, what's that?
I'm looking at that. I think it could be rewritten to better, you know what I mean? And maybe be part of, like mostly eating establishments, they have a special point. So the use of music, like with a live recording, would be, could be part of that.
Yeah. I mean, what I'm saying is that the restaurants, the bars that we have right now that have entertainment, I wouldn't really consider a nightclub that should be prohibited by this. But I want to think about if there is something else that we don't want that would fall under current definition before we just go.
Okay. So that's part of our action item. Moving on, then we're at item number five.
Yeah. That's just a weird chart reference. It has single-family dwelling detached and single-family dwelling attached. What does that mean? Attached single-family dwellings are, as Justin V. pointed out, things like row houses, condominiums, that may have a common wall, but they do not share, they're not in the same structure. They're sort of different structure. And the point to be made about this is detached dwellings are not a permitted use. Anyway, I don't understand it, but if you think it's fine, maybe.
Well, it has to be clear. So if there's a way we could create authority.
I just don't understand the term. Single-family dwelling detached, permitted, 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 and single-family dwelling attached, not... Well, the only kind of single-family dwelling, maybe there's a definition in there. I can look at that.
There we go. And actually, what Justin Glisser referenced is, oh, he's, but that's an office card. That's different.
There is a definition.
It's not a family dwelling.
Dwelling attached, a single or two-family dwelling attached with a common party wall.
Would that, would that pertain, let's use it as an example. They built up 75 Monroe. They decided to sell them as condominiums rather than rent them. Wouldn't those be considered single-family dwellings that share common walls?
They're in as apartments, you know, whether they're single, whether they're ownership apartments or rented apartments, they're apartments. So then that was fine, right? Yeah, I take that. The point is they're not permitted. The only way you can come in here is with a use variance. All right.
Okay, so number five.
I don't see that happening.
Okay, number five then is, I'm putting down stat that it stands, correct?
Yeah, I think it seems meaningful so you can skip it. It must be important to make a change.
Okay. Now we're good. So let's, I'm going to check on that one. Okay, item number six, we crossed out because it was just a duplicate of an earlier item. Item number seven. Okay, Steve, that's 168-9.
It's just the same thing. It's a reference to a nonexistent zoning district. Yeah, I don't have any other notes on this except a yes.
Oh, the incorrect reference. Okay.
So that should be LOR. Steve, you said, and in general references, 168-9. So I understand the first part about the incorrect zone. I don't understand the second part here.
I don't, to be honest, I don't remember what. I think there's something else I was, if I may rechange it right in there. I think that fixtures are a real issue.
Okay, LOR should be...
Yeah.
Limited, what is it? Limited office residential? Yeah. Okay, so we're good with that?
Replace that. Fix, yeah.
Okay. Item number eight, 98.1, the F rest records.
We've got, if, we might consider these for a moment together. They seem to be, several of these items in sequence here, and they seem to be doing the same sort of thing. I think that Justin might have waited, Justin D. might have waited on this as well. So basically, there's a part of our code that was the special exception code that no longer exists. But just changing this to, to reference the Village Board, I think actually goes away from the original intent, which was to hand this to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, of course, this is not part of the zoning code. So we may need some kind of a carve-out that says, for all intents and purposes, kind of consider it like the zoning code. Go in front of ZEA and deal that way. I think that, to me, it would be troublesome if we shifted this for the legislative board.
Right. And I think we should just say that the fence is going to be, anything higher than four feet, that kind of fence... feet, and that kind of fence is going to be subject to use variance criteria set forth of New York State Village Law.
Yep. So that would be, yeah, so ZVA, that's the same, I think Justin D. mentioned that as well, that's the same thing we have in the lighting code somewhere.
Yeah.
So we can.
The language we already said.
So Jeff, what we would be doing in that case is essentially just treating it with saying, we'd be treating it like a part of the zoning code that's subject to.
Actually, we wouldn't be treating it necessarily like the zoning code. We would make, we would make it an area variance with, you know, pursuant to New York State Village Law, which is outlines or considerations of the variance.
So that would be the language.
Let me get specifically there.
So your special exception basically turn, then it turn into special use permit or not?
No, no.
Specifically not that, because especially use permit is put in a form of the Village Board. And what we're saying is that it should be considered as an area variance by the ZVA.
Oh, okay. Or it has to point to a different.
And that's done.
The materials other than wood, that's going to be materials other than wood, must be approved by the zoning boards, zoning board of appeals as a, an area variance pursuant to New York State Village Law. Where are you? I'm in 98 hyphen one F.
Yeah, that's, that's basically what I was thinking that I missed to see here, too. There was just one other, I can't find it right now, but.
117-7 is the next one.
Yeah.
That's the same deal.
Yeah.
On the lighting.
I mean, if the board is comfortable, that's the same deal.
So in this case, in 117-13C, it says, requests for variances from the provisions of this chapter may be granted by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to the provision to Village Law. Is that the wording that, I mean, you specifically mentioned area variance.
Yeah, that's really essentially the wording.
Yeah, okay.
So what would we change, the next one, then, what would you change the language to that to 117-7B? Trying to get. Was that also reference special exception pursuant to?
Yeah, but that's the language that works.
Zoning board of appeals pursuant to New York State Village Law. If you want to try to say it consistently, it would be, the zoning board of appeals pursuant to New York State Village Law may grant a, I would change the whole phrase, I would just say, it's going to have to be reworded to make more, I'm not going, I don't want to try to cowl this into the same language, because it's just too awkward. So it's going to, it'll probably say something like, I haven't thought about it, but.
Could we have, could we ask Jeff then to kind of work out some language to help us out with that and get back for the next word shot? That'll be your action item check, okay?
I mean, I know what the board wants, so, I know what the board is after.
And it'll be consistent.
I'll draft something.
Okay.
And you'll either want it as part of the local law, or you'll want something else direct.
That's your action item. Okay, so where are we now?
117 is 10A. The reference points don't exist anymore.
Oh, yeah.
I believe that 21039 covers the same thing as what the reference point used to be.
My, my note is a yes.
Yeah.
Wait, on 210, 21039, you're saying it should be referenced 21039. I don't, I, I see this as the, the same as the other cases. 21039, I think, is the section on special use permits by the Village Board.
Well, temporary use permit in the code.
Temporary.
This is 117-7 is temporary outdoor lighting.
So on 117-7, the, that's the one.
No, 117-10A.
117-10A.
Not conforming temporary lighting may be permitted by a temporary zoning permit issued by the zoning board of appeals pursuant to 21039 instead of 210109 and 210113B4.
We just remove those and substitute 21039 for the, for the correct reference.
Yeah.
That's it. See where we're going with that?
I'm not sure if it all lines up. Hang on.
Okay, let's take a look at 21039.
Well, they're essentially the same kind of sections.
And it's only, it goes to the zoning board, yeah.
So just remember, when you're looking at the 11710 code references, it's the old zoning code.
Right.
And it still goes to the zoning board, the same as it did before, just it was referenced to a non-existent code.
You're updating it to the proper reference.
Right. They're pointing it to the right place. It's still a temporary use permit, but it's now under this reference, 39 versus the 109 or 113.
Let me just look up 21039 quickly here.
Yeah, just to make sure it's an accurate reference, is that where we're going with that?
Yeah, the review procedure is by the zoning board of appeals.
Temporary use permits.
I think it should be.
You have a different thought, Jeff?
No, I think we, I don't think, I don't think we should say 21039.
Okay.
We should say something different.
Everybody.
Say, I would say, the same as the temporary use permit. No, no, I would say article 39.
Oh, article, all right.
Because that covers.
Oh, covers everything.
The same versus, yeah.
So the language of them be directed to article 49.
Pursuant to article 39.
Article 49.
Pursuant to article 39 of zoning.
Yeah, I think that one is good. The next one.
Okay, that was 10. We're good with 10. We're moving on to number 11. Item 11, excuse me. That's 150-3. Is that where we all are?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Jeff's almost there.
What about, which one?
150-3.
Yeah, this is the same issue as 98, 1F, and 117-7.
So Steve, you mentioned that this should be 21035, but I, I think it's not that, I think that's the special use permit, and instead we want that to be the ZVA appeal.
Right, we want, we want, so this language should be.
Yeah, because it goes to the board or the zoning board.
So 150.
Hang on, Jeff's got something here.
Oh, maybe we're on 39 again?
No, 153I, F, and 210113. Oh, I got it. So 21013B2 should be a variance to the zoning board of appeals pursuant to New York State Law, just the same as.
And what's, what reference is that?
98, 1F, and 117-7. Okay. In 153I, there is a reference to 210113B2, and probably a special permit, but that should, that change, should be the same change, we've talked about twice already.
Right.
It should go to the zoning board of appeals pursuant to New York State Law for an area variance.
Yeah, I actually looked up the 2017 code, and 210113 is ZVA, essentially there, too.
So they're going to 39 again or something different?
No, no, it's going to be, it's going to be, no, it's going to be, 39 is a temporary permit.
Yeah.
This is going to be an area variance.
Yeah.
Or pursuant to.
So what was the line, read back the line if you're coming up with.
Whatever I said, whatever I said for 98, 117-7, it's going to be a variance pursuant to New York State Village Law.
Yeah, that keeps the review authority the same as the original code.
What code section is that, where is? It's 7712B of New York State Village Law. I won't say that, I will just say New York State Village Law.
And that covers.
Thank you, I feel better talking through that. I was, I was worried that there was, wasn't sure if people are intending to keep their review authority the same or if we're trying to change it, and I spent some time digging through, but it's, it's good to, I'm glad we're getting this straightened out. It sounds like we're not making substantive changes, just correcting the.
Well, there's clarity here, but you think?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, great, so.
Mayor, if, I was just wondering, we've talked about the, it seems like we're down to 15 minutes now, for a quarter to an hour here in our attorney class session. We've talked about the LDRP code fixes at two different meetings, I think. We've done direction from the planning board. I don't think we've asked for any from the HBB. I was just wondering if you could go to that rather than from that up to a fourth meeting.
Yeah, so just any other real quick thing that we could just say, yeah, that's a fix, that's the only, you know, just kind of while we're here.
We're getting to the first page or something.
Yeah, just to kind of, little rap, yeah.
I don't have anything that doesn't have notes except for 90 hyphen three of the code, which is really Steve's bailiwick.
Are you talking about number 17?
Which item?
I don't have, I don't have the numbers on mine.
Oh, you referenced the old. Reference to NEC should reference NFA.
Oh, so you gave me the old rap.
Probably.
I don't think, I don't think you're calling everything on that. The next one, because it should be every business district, right?
What are you talking about?
The 173-6.
Yeah, we're, we got, that's going to be, that is easy though, actually.
Which one are you looking at? What item number please?
173-6.
Oh, you were still at 12, okay.
It references B1, B1A, and those, and B2, B3, B4, and M1, so those should all be changed to the business district.
Which is VGVD, TDD.
Oh, yeah, I see where you are.
I'm sorry, VCB.
I had some questions on that one. I was wondering, is clear cut for me? I was wondering if perhaps we could go to, I was clear on numbers 15 and 16 in your list. The definitions, planning board in 210115 should be changed to 21015, and 210114 should be changed to 21016.
See where we are, Jeff is further down on the list.
Yeah.
I didn't have, I.
Yeah, but, okay, my.
Did you have a thought on that?
Yeah, it should be like we did before, it should be article 15 and article 16.
Oh, change, okay, change to article.
What numbers are those?
For us, our, the item numbers are, oh, well, you want, it says 90.
No, 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 list numbers.
List numbers 15 and 16.
Okay, cool.
All right, you're skipping down the list.
He just, he didn't, we didn't close out 12 yet, we were still discussing that.
Yeah.
Okay, but.
Well, that's okay, so 15 and 16, articles, so that's article 15, 16 is article 16, isn't that symmetry? Okay.
We're good?
I got that one.
Okay, that's crossed off.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, let's just zip back to 12, because we were discussing that.
Looks like the one that Justin said is clear about.
Okay, so that was, Jeff, 173-6 permitted in zones, B1 and BA should be M1.
No, it should be.
What should it be?
No, I, I.
Okay, so let's, yeah.
Should be VCB, TDD, VGV, MUOF, MUEC. Alphabet zoning.
I know.
He said VCB, VGV, TDD, MUOF, MUEC.
Thank you very much. Say that three times fast.
No.
Dorothea, you're getting, Jeff, Jeff, you can give Dorothea the language.
Well, I will be direct.
Okay, but, you know, she's got the notes, too.
And actually, just kind of a little bit, because I'm another board, the reference in the board says you could be.
Hang on, hang on. Yeah, Jeff's still in the zone.
Justin, are you okay with this one?
I am, yeah, I'm sorry, I just need another moment to parse it. I'm okay with that, too, and I noticed that Justin Lee Star also says that he's okay with this one, so.
12, right? 12, the change is on 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought that was more complicated than it was.
Okay, so now, Jeff, are you still needing another minute?
Oh, no, go ahead. What number is that?
It's our, I didn't know.
12, I got that, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'll, I'll show my notes.
Okay, so now we're looking at item number 13.
Yeah, to me, it's very strange, because I'm on a board, and the rule or law, you can't, you're not supposed to be absent from more than 20% of the meetings in order to be a valid member of the board. Our code says you can be, yeah, absent from 80% of the meetings and still be a valid member.
Yeah, I think we want to look at that, don't we?
No, I technically can't miss two more, two meetings a year without some sort of balance.
Do we all see where that is?
Must be present.
Pardon?
It probably was intended to be must be present.
Right. I think it just got written, kind of.
Okay, so we're all agreed that the language is going to be corrected to reflect that. Okay. So now, Jeff, we're moving on to 14, item 14.
Whatever the board wants.
And it's 176-16 and 18.
It's in regard to excavation, like doing any kind of work, and saying the first mission should be the board of trustees, then you guys don't have any reference to when something is being built or gone. You know, I mean, you really don't, you're not involved in that portion unless you really want to be, but.
Let me just read Justin Lee Star's comment here. He says, digging up a road or sidewalk should be reviewed by the trustee, shouldn't it? It's village infrastructure. Perhaps emergency repair work should get different treatment. I don't know how the DOT does.
Okay.
Sorry, Justin.
That's good. Said, I don't know how the DOT does things without permission, are they exempt from our laws?
I mean, my thought, my initial reaction, and Steve, you can probably speak better to this than I can, I mean, if anybody is messing around with village infrastructure, I go through Scott Harv, everything. If you're, if you're digging on the road edge or in a road, it all needs to be approved by Scott Harv prior to issuing a permit.
I think there's something about the trustees needed to approve. Oh, yeah, we approve. Anything like curb cuts or.
Just a question, don't we do approvals and sort of, cuts for parking?
Yeah.
The driveways? The driveway entrances?
Yeah, that requires the board of trustees, yeah.
Do you want to leave this one?
Yeah, I'd be hesitant to change that, without more research at least.
We'll wait to discuss tomorrow. I'd like to circle box the LWRP code again, if we're going to do that before 6:30, if we're going to keep on that schedule.
Yeah, no, I hear you, so let's just make then, item number 14. You know, action items that it needs a little more work, let's just research it, how about that? You know, because we're not prepared to really, okay, so. So that's new research, okay.
We already did 15.
Yeah, so this, hold on. Okay, so what, so our stopping point now then, we've gone through all the items up through 16 and have taken either action or have agreed, okay. So we'll leave the rest and then we'll switch over to the discussion on the LWRP for our next workshop item. And then, to clarify, Jeff, at the next meeting, you will have some sort of, you know, reference to what we discussed through this evening or not?
Maybe that's the board's, that's up to the board, I would have anticipated getting through all of the list and then doing something that incorporates all the changes, but we don't, you know, I can do a piecemeal if you want.
Makes more sense to me to finish the list.
Well, I mean.
We're there either way, I'm there either way, either way, the work gets done.
Yeah.
You know, and we just keep moving along.
Well, what does the board want me to do?
I'd say just start in, you know, either way, the work gets done.
That's fine.
Just start in if you're leisure.
So you want, you want to do the language from 1 through 16.
Yeah.
And then, you know.
Yeah, we'll pick right after, we'll keep moving.
Yeah.
There are some items that aren't done 1 through 16.
Right, most we agreed on.
Right, exactly. Okay, so anyway, now let's just switch over to, yeah, the discussion here.
So the last meeting, we left it, we were going to run it by the HPP and the planning board, the ZBA, and that has been done. And then we got some feedback from both.
Did we?
HPP, we didn't, we didn't get any feedback.
No feedback from HPP.
Whenever feedback I received, I guess.
It was only from, okay.
Double check, I think any.
I'm not sure, it's after the HPP.
I don't think it did after the HPP.
Ah, okay, let me check.
No, it wasn't.
It was?
Yeah.
It was, I never.
Because it never came up at the meeting.
Never came up to me, ever came what?
I understand Kristen sent it to HPP.
I'd like to double check them then, so it would have come up at the meeting?
I feel like I saw it when it was referred, but I could be wrong, I'll check in my email. Anyway, we got feedback from.
From one board. Kristen sent it to the HPP, is that the question? Kristen sent it to the HPP.
I, that's my understanding.
Yeah, I saw it.
My understanding is it not.
But you got some feedback.
Pardon?
You got feedback.
No, 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 that's okay, if you want me to come call, reach out to Jeff while you're discussing and see if he did get.
Yeah, but it was on, I don't think it was on the.
The board never discussed it, even if, even if he got, the board never discussed it.
Yeah, why don't you just.
I think this is actually pertinent to the question here, because we're asking about if we're going to ask the HPP for their input on content from the planning board, and it seems like we submitted something, so I'm going to move it away then, so.
Well, we want to know if they got it, we're married to the.
We just don't know what happened, right, and I think that's what we want to sort of chase down, yeah, so. Steve's going to make a quick call anyway, we can continue with our discussion here, so.
So that, as I was saying, that is the question here, as far as the LWRP code. We've gotten input from the planning board, and I believe that we received input from planning board member Marshall, planning board member Blaisstrahl, and from the entire planning board too. And my understanding of their suggestions is the same thing that I suggested doing, or at least that's the opinion that I hold, which is that they said to choose our attorney's option, option two. Adding a term, all of the applicable, was in Justin Blaisstrahl's suggestion in one point. And option two, for also 1215F, so basically, this is going to, the planning board may receive it, perhaps as part of the secret review, but they wouldn't, it wouldn't be a mandatory referral to that board, nothing would be held up based on their input. So those, those would be the options that I would prefer as well. Now, when we get down to 1215H, I think that all of us are, at least myself and the剩下 planning board members, are in favor of leaving just kind of alternate path in place as long as it stays with the planning board. I think that's the way that I would go on that one as well. So option two, option two, option one.
Any other thoughts? You know, I just think.
No feedback?
No, he did not get anything, I just talked to your pop, he said he would not send anything in regards to this.
Well, we have requested that both boards weigh in, that they should have at least the opportunity to.
I actually think it is entirely up to this board.
We're doing it as a courtesy and because we seem like the only thing to do.
Maybe if you were to make a mandatory referral, we should hear from them, I guess, maybe, but.
I mean, they're going to have an opportunity.
Again, that's your call.
No, if you want to put it to, here, agree and move forward, it would be public and they would be able to respond at that point too. When it goes to hearing, okay.
So in terms of, I'm just trying to understand the mechanism. If it's denied, what happens then? So it just goes right back to the planning board with different criteria, and there is no other weighing in or sort of checking balance from another board?
Yep, that's correct.
They're being Article 78.
Yeah, so we go to litigation in our village, yeah, so we would be incurring.
Wouldn't go until the planning board made the second decision. One more question.
There he is, okay, we'll follow up, I mean, I don't know, we'll follow up, so yes, for the record, HPP did receive an email from Kristen Kreit about the LWRP and the meeting this evening. They did.
I have an update to check that.
Was there an email about them getting input responding back?
HPP input LWRP code update.
Okay, good, okay, I'm, I'm just asking.
And it went out on the 21st October.
So this strongly supports the ballot, but I'm favoring you.
Yeah, I'm not sure that it does, but it's neither here nor there, if you get, you get something as an application that comes in their bag, it automatically is a whole different or different kettle of fish, but it's still up to this board, it's not.
So what is the downside to kicking it within the planning board? At least there are any.
Other than you get a different view of things, but, you know, I'm not sure that whether that's a downside or not, that's up to the board. I mean, technically, the board of trustees could, under the present code. If the, if the board of trustee was involved in the project, I'm sorry, then they could, could be the, another board to whom this safety valve procedure could, could go.
So that, yeah, and when the change, the safety valve is either, goes right back to the board that it denied it under different criteria, gives a different set of criteria back to that same board, and then with the possibility, depending on the outcome of litigation, of an Article 78. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess, you know, I would like, you know, us to reflect on that in terms of everything going consistently back to the same board. I don't, you know, I'm just, nothing more than that, also, you know, even looking at the criteria that are applied under the LWRP, some of the criteria actually maybe better, are better matched for oversight was from the HPP, I mean, we should maybe talk about that as well. I mean, Jeff, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, there's clearly things in there that are more within the expertise of the HPP.
Yeah.
There's clearly, clearly things in there that are more within the expertise of the planning board. So.
So, I mean, I would think that you would want them in upfront, you know, both boards. I mean, that's, that's something.
My thought is that you would, the village would benefit, however it happens, whether it's mandatory or not, from benefit from the HPP early on, giving some thought to how the project's going to look and feel when it gets to them at the other end of the pipeline. You know, if, you know, if you don't get some kind of opinion from them at the beginning, you run the risk of yes, 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 no. Which I think, even if there's only an opinion, you at least know, the applicant knows what where the HPP may come out on something. Which I think is useful, whether that's part of the LWRP, if it really makes sense to do it, it's far in advance, but I would, you know, I mean, that's, if I were the applicant, I would never do a large project without getting a for information only opinion from the HPP first, I mean, that would be just a prudent thing to do.
And there's nothing in the code that prevents them from doing so.
No, no, but that's, you know.
But I think.
Sometimes applicants are more stubborn than practical and smart.
Yeah, but I also think sort of putting the language there that indicates their engagement upfront, I think would be helpful.
We're not hearing, I don't share the same opinion, I think that it's adding a structural deficiency that's not necessary, it overly complicates things, it ends up putting the boards in a position where you have a different board that is essentially kind of acting as an appeal based on weaker standards of another under the board, which I don't really think is appropriate. I think it does make sense, the way that it seems to be written and tends to stay with the planning board. I would agree that it seems like the planning board feels the same way, so I think that we should go in that direction.
No, I, I hear that, I'm not, I'm not saying no, but I think, and we've seen this happen, you know, yes, 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 no, you know, in other words, I'm just trying to look at a couple of different scenarios, different consequences of.
I think you're talking about, you were talking about different things and you're talking.
Well, okay.
You're talking about who should do the H review. I mean, the last comment you made was directed, who should do the H review? And I think you were talking about whether or not to be a referral, whether, whether recommended or just a referral, you know. So I think that's what you're talking about.
It seems like there's a public.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just wanted the board members to weigh in, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? Yes, Bob?
Robert Torey, Southern Washington Avenue, I think if there's one thing we learned from the 75, I know process, is that it's inadvisable to have two boards regulating each other, where one board becomes the appeal board, the other, which is why we changed our code to eliminate that. I think, however, that to have an advisory opinion to the planning board from the expertise of the historic preservation board makes sense, which is normally a part of the planning board's process anyway. So I think, you know, I think it's all in the wording here, I think it shouldn't be worded so that it's an actual appeals process, but an advisory opinion is something that normally the planning board would normally do, and certainly in this situation makes sense.
So the, my understanding though, is that the, the criteria, once they were denied, was not in the form of an appeal, am I correct? That that's not the language?
It's not an appeal, really, it's a whole different, differently focused review. It's not like we're going to look at the planning board, their job, see how they did it, see if we think they've been arbitrary and capricious or whatever else it might be, this is a, this is a whole different review, I don't even, I don't know what you would call it, so that's why I've been.
It would be called an appeal, and it is not.
That's why I would call me a safety valve.
Yeah, okay.
Because it is a, is a way to relieve the specific requirements of the LWRP in a more limited circumstance.
Sounds like a variance. Which, which I think is the problem.
Yes, I wouldn't even call it a variance.
And that points to another issue here with, with having a different board, we don't know what to call it, which might be a sign that perhaps we're going down the wrong path here. I do think, again, that that's the safety.
I think that's solvable.
And, you know, I'm not against an optional, you know, referral for input, but it seems like the, the planning board is unclear about what they like, I'm clear on what I would like. And it seems like we've got a clear direction forward here. So my proposal is that pursuant to the recommendation from the planning board, 1215E, we use the attorney's second suggestion, along with the words, all of the applicable regarding the LWRP policy standards. In the second case, 1215F, we use the second option offered by the attorney, and the alternate path stays in place provided that it stays with the planning board, which is 1215H1, option one, after the attorney.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
There's a motion.
Second, okay, back for discussion, I'd like the clarification of all of the applicable. That language.
That, that Blaisstrahl adds?
Yeah. Yeah, let's, let's clarify that since.
Where is that?
1215D.
1215E?
Oh, I see D.
Let's see.
What is it? We know yet?
I'm looking at 121, I'm looking at the letter, 121-5.D. And it starts with after referral from an agency.
Sure, okay.
Okay, and we put in, so it reads consistent with, it used to read consistent with LWRP policy standards and consistent with all of the applicable.
Because, because some aren't.
Okay, just trying to understand, you know, so it's clear with anybody reading that what that means, and I just want, you know, maybe our attorney to, do you see where we're going, Jeff? Okay. With the assumption that some of them wouldn't be, okay, okay.
One thing that would, I'm sorry to bring this up, I thought it was three minutes ago and then you had to go on to something else. The language of 1215H.
Should be eliminated in its entirety, that was the other option.
Right. What we don't have in the present H1 is the language. If the planning board runs or agency, in a case of the planning board's determination not forthcoming within the time specified in section E, determines the action or not, then the planning board or agency, this is where this, this went off the rails a little bit. The last, second to last line, unless the planning board or agency, and then put the parentheticals back in so that if the agency acts, the planning board hasn't met the timeframe, then it stays with the agency right through the end of the process. Do you know what I mean?
I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not entirely sure I follow the sort.
So if E, now, where exactly is it?
I thought the term agency was the.
No, the issue is that the second agency, or the second time agency is used in paragraph H1 does not have it in a parenthetical that determines the only time it may step in is if the planning board has not reached this determination within the time period specified subdivision E. is if the planning board has not reached this determination within the time period specified subdivision E.
What is that, E?
So, you, what you have in the current version of the code, not accepting, oh, the exception of H, is that if the planning board doesn't do their, doesn't do the findings within the correct amount of time, the other agency, the referring agency may step in. So, H starts to carry that through and then stops, and that's the confusion that we ran into when it says planning board or agency at the end of H. The problem is it doesn't say planning board or agency in the case when the planning board's determination is not forthcoming within the time period specified subdivision E. So if you don't add that, then you've got the agency, if in the initial review, the agency is doing it, this planning board was not acting for a working reason.
So. Can he just finish this up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I just wanted to.
So, so in the case where the agency is doing the first part of the review, you have now set it up, we do it, if we adopt this as, as presented, then you'd have the agency doing the first part of the review, the planning board doing the second part of the review, even though they didn't act on the first part. So in that case, you'd have two different agencies again doing it and virtually the same problem that is being worried about at this point.
So in, in your suggestion, that the planning board wanted to follow, it doesn't say or agency at all.
Right, right, right.
So, but what, what is the case that we're thinking of where a different agency would start the LWRP review process?
Where the planning board doesn't act within the timeframe required of it.
And that's a safeguard essentially.
For the.
For the apple, right.
So they don't have to do an Article 78 proceeding with a mandamus, which means make, make somebody do something.
With mandamus. Yes, then X, okay.
Got to interject, you might also want to change 121-6, if you're changing this chapter.
Well, let's, can we get to that, but let's, let's make sure we're clear on this piece of the discussion, okay? Because I, I see where Jeff's going, that essentially, maybe it's not the right word, but there's sort of the consistency of the action.
Yeah, the consistency that is being dealt with by making the, the planning board the only agency may not work if the planning board is not acting for whatever reason, whatever iteration the planning board appear in the future, I have no reason to believe that current iteration would not act. But it's in the, it's in the code that if they don't act, the other agency steps in. And in that situation, if you leave it the way it's written, the planning board will be reviewing that other agency's actions.
Right, and then we've got a reverse problem.
Right.
Right, we just switched it, so we need to have the consistency of the language.
You need to do whatever you want.
Well, we, okay, whoa.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get elected, you guys got elected.
No, no, but if I'm understanding what you're saying, or essentially, we still have the same problem.
Renee, Renee, well.
Yes.
Just a reverse.
Yeah.
Of what we're trying to fix.
Right.
With the, the fix.
Yes.
However, I think that, I, I see where you're going, and I think that, so you've got this case for the planning board valves to act in the initial review. The original, the referring agency does the determination, and then the, and then there's this pressure valve, or whatever you want to call it. And that goes to the planning board, which valves to act in the first place. So essentially, you've got a, a planning board that's not really doing their job, you know, which is a case totally different than what we have right now, where they're very different from the planning board. And, and then, you know, this, this pressure valve goes to the planning board. In that case, I don't really, it seems like the planning board is not really doing that job anyway.
But what if they decide, what if this was something totally controversial, hypothetically speaking?
Of course.
But they didn't act in time, so another board took over the review, and then if we leave it the way it is, it gets kicked, kicked back to the planning board that didn't.
Do its job.
Do its job in the first place, and what if they decide, oh, now we're going to step in for whatever reason, again, not this current board.
Okay, we qualified that, we understand.
So I can see where that would be tricky, because yeah, you're, you're most likely correct, they're not going to act a second time either. What if they do?
You can ensure that they won't act a second time.
Right, because then we've got the same problem, the board that initially did their review is now being, you know.
And then from a legal standpoint, I don't know if the term arbitrary and capricious, they didn't bother the first time, now they're, so that wouldn't be it, but is there any legal consequence? Or is this simply just a mechanism to make sure?
As, as there was no legal consequence the way it happened.
Okay.
There would be no legal consequence to setting that up in the review, reverse for the future. So it's the same, you're, you're applying two, you're applying two different theories to the same issue. I'm sorry, you're applying two different results to the same problem.
And we want to have.
The issue is that one board doesn't want to then have it taken to another board with this relief valve or whatever you call it. So we've got a reverse scenario if we were to do that.
That's it, exactly.
Then you have to factor in that the possibility of a board not taking the action, because they have a timeframe, if they don't act, they don't.
So is the timeframe a reasonable timeframe? And is there a way for, say, the planning board has too many projects on, on its plate, and so they can't get to the review in time, and they violate the timeframe? I mean, I don't know, I'm going, I'm going down a rabbit hole here, but if the timeframe is, we feel is reasonable.
I think, I think the changes that have been suggested extend the timeframe clearly to when the application is complete. In the present, doesn't, seems like it's a little less clear when that timeframe runs. So, I mean, I'm sorry I raised it this late, Dave.
Well, I think it's important, because we're, as Renee said, we're reversing the same inconsistency.
It's not taking responsibility away, or taking, it's saying, if they don't act at the timeframe, then we've got someone else doing the initial review that should also do the relief, whatever we call it.
So my only concern with doing that, just to, to explain why I'm, I'm not just totally jumping on board with this yet, is that I'm concerned that it'll, based on the way that it's written, it'll open up the same kind of a situation that we have right now, where the planning board does the initial review, and then it still goes to a secondary board, and it seems like we've got to be very careful with.
It doesn't.
Well, I think if you use the same language consistently throughout the code, that the other agency is only acting when the planning board has failed, failed to timely act. Then it's all consistent, and you won't have, so the planning board acts timely, then the planning board does this review.
Yeah, done and done, and it's just, it's just, it's just looking at a potential scenario and putting in that little safety valve. And I think that's, I think that's a good thing, and it creates that consistency all the way through. And so I would, I would like, you know, we do have the motion and the second, and maybe, you know, you'd want to consider just amending it with that piece.
Yeah.
You know?
Let me, let me just make a, a new motion, so it's all clear then.
Please help us, yeah.
So the, the proposal then is that we follow the planning board's suggestions, since they're, they're clearly written out here. And we will use the, the wording of the.
Trustee, yes, help me?
Yep.
I would say that the, the change, there will be a change in H1, and it will read the second time, I'm sorry. We'll get this right. Last time the planning board, the words "planning board" are used in subparaphrase H1, they will be followed by a parenthetical or agency in, in a case when the planning board's determination is not forthcoming within the time period specified in subdivision E, and the parenthetical, and the words "or agency" will be accepted where they appear, sorry, they'll be removed from where they appear after the last time the words "planning board" are used in that subsection. It's those, that's the specific change we, we were talking about.
As, as suggested by our attorney then, and in all other cases, 121-5D, D and F, the second option will be used as suggested by the planning board, including their modification in D, adding the words "all of the applicable."
Okay, well, everybody?
Seconded?
As amended?
Yes. Okay. Lily's seconded before. Oh, so we're just amending it, sorry.
No, we're not.
Oh, it's a new.
Yeah, you can, you can, okay, so.
All right, awesome. I'm sorry, I fell asleep. That's okay, I'll stop.
Well, let's do it, okay.
Ready? Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield?
Aye.
Trustee Stetson?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, let's, let's wrap this up, because I know, let's see, we, well, this is an attorney client, we don't need the.
Right, you just got to meet, you know, an attorney client, I'm going to make some notes when I get back.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yes?
I'm sorry, court case question. When you make this motion, what are we doing? Because.
I'm going to direct the.
You're going to direct the, go off, and then it's to the board, so I have no action to, okay.
No. No, thank you, because I know.
What I'm sure, where this stands.
Right, right, attorney's going.
I'm going to do nothing, I'm good.
Real quick, if you're going to amend this code, the 121-6 enforcement points to the Director of Public Works.
Oh, that's right. Let's put that on for the next time.
Well, they, we write, we write this, this code section.
Well, we, okay, so what, do you want us to look at it really quickly, really quickly? Because I know, I remember we spoke about this way back.
Yeah. You know, it points two places in 121-6, it says Director of Public Works, and it should be Court of Works.
Yeah, that's pretty obvious.
Simple, simple.
Yeah. Do you all see where that is?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Wait, this is in the LWRP code?
Yeah, it's, it's in chapter 1, 121-6.
I don't like this language at all. We're asking you to look at it. No work or activity will be getting based merely on an LWRP consistency determination. I mean, you've got to have all, all the other approvals.
So we want to direct you both to take a look at the language that's there? Yeah. It sounds like it's.
That's what I suggest, what are, when's our next meeting?
Next week.
So Steve and I'll get together on this. I want, I want to get the sense from the board. My sense is that there's an implication in here that work or activity can begin once they get an LWRP consistency determination. And yeah, once again, LWRP determination, they're approved by the supervisor.
It should be a one approval of, of many, and they should not begin work until all of the.
That would help.
I mean, I think it should be set up. There will be no further, I have to think about it, I mean, I'm not sure what, what to tell, what to say.
Okay, so given, given that we know that this is an issue, let's, have you folks worked on it and added to the list?
Seven days.
Well.
It doesn't have to be, you know, because we've still got another page of.
Yeah, we still have.
I understand. Okay, all right, we'll do it that way, I was thinking that we can tie it all together.
I know.
In the LWRP, if I gave it to you by next week.
If you can, great, if not, we don't hold you to it, how's that?
I can't, it's got to be seven days, agent.
Oh, right, agent, yeah, so, okay.
Somebody's got their time machine, I don't know what to do with it.
I know, I left mine at home, all right. Where are we here, we're all good, I'll undertake a motion to adjourn. Roll call?
Trustee Lightfoot?
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield?
Aye.
Trustee Stetson?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Great, thanks everybody, thanks for all the input. And then we're going to switch to attorney. Yeah, we, well, are we going?